Good evening to you all. Welcome to the Monday, May 14, 2018, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening. If you could, please try to find a seat. I know it's a bit crowded this evening, but anyway, if you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Oliver? Oh, Mr. Lickenhouse. Ooh, someone snuck in there. Took the back of the...
He is apparently in travel and route.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. And again, welcome to our Monday, May 14, 2018 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. Do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor moved off the meeting agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it. We have a busy evening of proclamations and special presentations. It's a very special night for a lot of folks. And we're going to start with the first one, which is a memorial resolution honoring Rick Turman. And for that, Vice Mayor Conley is going to go ahead and do the honors.
A memorial resolution honoring Maurice J. Rick Turman. Whereas the city of Falls Church lost one of its valuable and cherished citizens with the passing of Rick Turman, a 57-year resident of the city of Falls Church. And whereas Mr. Turman served the city of Falls Church on the Falls Church Historical Commission for more than 30 years. And whereas Mr. Turman contributed numerous scholarly works about the history and development of Falls Church and was an enthusiastic expert on the Civil War ballooning career of Professor Thaddeus Low, who pioneered military balloon flight in Falls Church in 1861. And Mr. Turman also served on the Falls Church Tricentennial Committee, the Northern Virginia Boundary Stones Commission, Nation's Capital Boundary Stones Committee, the Northern Virginia Civil War Trails Regional Panel, and on the Falls Church Civil War 150th Anniversary Committee. And whereas Mr. Turman was a longtime member of the Village Preservation and Improvement Society, the Friends of Cherry Hill Foundation, the Northern Virginia Association for History, and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9/274, and was active in the Falls Church Presbyterian Church Boy Scout Troop 186, the Falls Church Scout Building Association, and the Falls Church Parent Teacher Association. And whereas Mr. Turman will be remembered as champion of the value of local history and as an enthusiastic supporter of the cultural heritage of the Falls Church community.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, honors Rick Turman and his legacy of service to the community and offers sincere condolences to his family. Do we have anyone from the family here this evening with us?
They were actually unable to make it, but I'll be sending this to the family.
Thank you. I'm sure they would appreciate, and we appreciate his service to our community. So, thank you very much. Our next memorial resolution is regarding Frances Richardson, and Mr. Snyder's going to do the honors.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is a memorial resolution honoring Frances Richardson, a truly remarkable person. Whereas the community lost a valuable and cherished citizen and dedicated volunteer with the passing of Fran Richardson at 100 years of age on January 30, 2018. And whereas Ms. Richardson had a lifelong commitment to education as both a student and a teacher. And whereas Ms. Richardson was a dedicated supporter of voting rights in the United States and abroad. And whereas Ms. Richardson's love of travel led her to visit or live in more than 100 countries on six continents. And whereas Ms. Richardson led an adventuresome and storied life interviewing Eleanor Roosevelt in 1938, becoming the first woman to earn her bachelor's degree in journalism at Kent State University in 1939, participating in the 1963 March on Washington, studying Mandarin at age 69 in order to teach English in China until being forced to leave following the Tiananmen Square massacre in 1989, rafting the Colorado River at age 78, and registering voters in Bosnia in 1997. And whereas Ms. Richardson held a strong belief in volunteering and was active in the League of Women Voters, For Love of Children, the American Association of University Women, Citizens for a Better City, and the YWCA, helped found the Falls Church Housing Commission and was instrumental in establishing the Falls Church Homeless Shelter. And whereas Ms. Richardson was much loved and respected by her family, friends, coworkers, citizens, and students, both in the United States and around the world. And whereas Ms. Richardson's true legacy lies in the profound effect she had on the countless people she mentored and taught throughout her career.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, recognizes with great admiration and appreciation the contribution of Fran Richardson over the course of her life and career and offers sincere condolences to her family. Is there anyone here tonight from the family? Oh, thank you. Well, come forward, please. We'd like to recognize you and give you this resolution. Yes, please.
(inaudible)
Okay, our next...
Just, Mr. Mayor, if I might. This was Alice Richardson, her daughter, who received the proclamation. There are a lot of young folks in the audience, and let me just tell you a couple more things that this resolution doesn't talk about. After hearing about the beginning of World War II, Fran Richardson joined the Red Cross and was with the Allied armies all across the fighting in northern Africa, up into Italy, France, and finally Germany. Fran Richardson contributed to the war effort in a very significant way. She was also a mentor for literally hundreds of people around the world, and she was a citizen activist right here in the city of Falls Church. In a word, she lived in and was an active participant in the whole history of the last half of the 20th century. So, there's a celebration of her life at the McLean Community Center this Saturday. Folks that knew her are certainly invited, but folks that didn't know her are invited to participate in the celebration of a really incredible life. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Of course. Thank you very much. Now, we're going on to some special presentations. The first is recognizing Falls Church's Employee of the Year, and we just came from a very touching ceremony over at Cherry Hill Farmhouse, and the celebration's going to continue right now. Mr. Shields, do you want to go ahead and start the honors?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of Council, and everyone who's gathered here today. This is a very special and unique recognition for Ibi Acosta. Our Employee of the Year is the highest honor that an employee can earn, and it's done each year through a nomination process. And the Employee Review Board, which is a citizen board, then makes the final selection based on the nominations received. And so what we'd like to do, I don't believe we have a representative of the Employee Review Board here tonight, but Ms. Messer, our HR Director, will say a few words, and Ms. Bawa, who is Ms. Ibi's supervisor in the Finance Department also, and I suspect that Ms. Acosta, Ibi's going to, might want to say a word or two as well. So I think that'd be the order that we'll proceed in. So let me turn it to Ms. Messer.
Ibi, come on up. Karen, come on up. And I want to acknowledge Megan DeSalle, our HR Generalist, who's here with us as part of our celebration process as well. Stand here. So this is an annual event, and it's an honor that we are able to recognize an Employee of the Year who has really done outstanding work. The Employee of the Year is an annual program, are nominated by either their coworkers or members of the community. And then, this year, we had eight nominees and a hard decision, but the cream rose to the top, and we're going to celebrate Ibi this evening. The Employee Review Board is chartered through the city code. They are appointed by City Council, so they are an independent body that reviews these nominations. They're submitted to HR. We send it to them. They review, and they make a recommendation. And so we're honored to have this evening event. The Review Board prepares a letter, which we have here this evening, that encapsulates the summary of the nominations from all of Ibi's coworkers. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bawa to share those good works. I'll add a little comments, and then we have a little bit of recognition as well. And as Mr. Shields indicated, we will give Ibi the floor at the end, but she's got to wait until we celebrate her first.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to read this for Ms. Acosta. Dear Ms. Acosta, it is with great pleasure and sincere thanks for your creativity and hard work during 2017 that we congratulate you on your selection as 2017 Falls Church City Employee of the Year. Your 2017 work extended far beyond what might be expected of a senior administrative assistant in the Finance Division, working on payroll and accounting payables. Your work beyond your normal assigned duties began when you realized that the city records contractor was charging too much and performing poorly. You learned this by examining record boxes in City Hall and off-site at the contractor's storage. Your findings resulted in contracting with a new records company that saved the city money and improved service that complied with state requirements. Once the vacating of the City Hall became necessary to accommodate a major renovation of City Hall, it must have been obvious to you that, based on your recent records experience, you could play an important role in facilitating the movement of staff and records to temporary space outside the City Hall. And so began your task, which others subsequently described as beyond Herculean. While continuing to perform your regular duties, you took the lead in organizing and overseeing the move, which included organizing an oversight group, securing appropriate record boxes and materials, and developing instructions and guidance, as well as being available for all the questions that followed. The Chief of Police was sufficiently pleased with your performance, and you were honored by being selected Employee of the Fourth Quarter of 2017 in recognition of your leadership in preparation for the temporary move and skill with police records. Therefore, on behalf of the Falls Church community, please accept our gratitude for your dedicated work and our congratulations. For the...
Now, some of the funness behind Ibi's work, we actually saw her skill set back a few years ago when she was in Public Works, and she overtook reevaluating all of our Dominion Energy Virginia accounts, which are a lot when you think of all the streetlights, the park lights, the traffic signals, and cleaned up those accounting, got rid of duplicates, and made sure we were only paying for things that are in the city. That, and then the artwork at City Hall, I do want to highlight, besides all those boxes and records and important things that needed to go to archive through proper record retention and also temporary storage because they're coming back, she took special care of all of the art, whether it was the quilt, the portraits in chambers, or some of our dedication plaques to make sure they were properly packaged and stored so they're safe when they return at the end of this year. So those are just some additional things to the kind summary words that the Employee Review Board did. Tenacious and organized and persistent are good descriptions of Ibi because she gets the job done. And so with that, Megan, if you'd like to come up and share what you have in your hand.
Ibi, I have here the Hall of Fame Employees of the Year dating all the way back to 1987.
Oh, yes.
And you're here, right here, Elizabeth Ibi Acosta.
Yes, thank you.
So thank you for your service to the city, and you'll be on the wall for years to come.
This is illustrious people here.
Yep, some big names here.
Yeah, big names.
Would you like to say anything? You're welcome to.
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. In the process of finding out the records that the city had stored for more than 10 years at the place that I will not name, it was clear that a lot of the boxes contained things that we really didn't need. But the boxes also contain some pretty important historical records, and I can show you the original water coupons from 1938, and I can show you a lot of very interesting things. But here's something that was really interesting to me. And Mary, the chief, had mentioned that I have a public service heart, and if I do, it's because I come by it genetically. So in uncovering these records, I have in front of me a letter dated April 16, 1990, and this was addressed to Mr. Kenneth Burnett, congratulating him on his nomination for Employee of the Year. Now, I don't know why he didn't win, since now he has a building named after him, but apparently he lost out in 1990. But the interesting thing for me was that this letter is signed by my father, Francis J. Acosta, who was on the City Employees Review Board, as well as the School Board and the Electoral Board. And as many of you know, there's a monument to my parents in front of the library. And this is all to say that one of the things that has distinguished Falls Church since its beginning has been the service of its citizens. And, you know, we grew up on Maple Avenue, and we saw the history of people dedicated. My sister went to school with Silversteins. I went to school with Wellses. I mean, this was about, you know, service. The residents worked to make the city a better place. Oh, hey, let's have a thing called Citizens for a Better City, and let's have a thing called Friends of the Library. So I come by it through my parents, and I've been fortunate enough to come to work for the city and to have been able to use my special tenacious and sometimes salty strengths to help you, and I will continue to do so in the future. So thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Why don't you come forward? Ibi, why don't you come forward and receive our thanks? Thank you so much. And Falls Church is really about the people, and that's a high honor indeed here in the city, so congratulations. Our next special presentation is regarding Operation Earth Watch. Mr. Shields, who's doing, oh, you coming up? Indeed, well, come on down. Welcome.
If I could just invite everyone who's been involved with Operation Earth Watch to join me. So our sponsors, volunteers, staff, support, and the children who designed this year's t-shirt, please.
Not all at once. Come on down, everyone. Yeah, they're good. Everyone with a t-shirt on, come on down, and then some.
So Operation Earth Watch is the city's environmental action program for elementary schoolchildren. It's been running for 25 years now. This is our 25th anniversary. So over that time, probably about 4,000 children have worked on their own on environmental projects and recruited their parents to adopt more environmentally friendly ways in the city. And as Ibi mentioned, like so many of the great programs in Falls Church, it was started by volunteers. Diane Landry, Mary Bumgarner, Mia Mussolini, Barry Bushow, Melissa Teetz, were all key figures in starting the program, supported by that very memorable city staff person, Annette Mills, later by Kathy Allen, Allison Lorenz, Chris McGowan, and now I support the program. But it is still run by volunteers. Sarah Beeman-Balden leads the program and does all the work at TJ. And then Susan Matchett supports at Mount Daniel, and Laurel Ruhlend at St. James. And this year, we've actually recruited a cadre, a new cadre of volunteers. They're led by Anu Gupta and Naomi Goodwin, plus student members of the ESC. So the ESC has six student members this year, and three of them are supporting Operation Earth Watch: Hannah Trauberman, Evelyn Duras, and Katie Deal. So it goes on. Each child who participates every month of the school year gets a free t-shirt to wear in the Memorial Day Parade, and each year, the t-shirt features designs by program participants. Sylvia, would you step forward, please? Out there, so they can see your t-shirt. So the front of the t-shirt this year was Sylvia's design. Sylvia's a fourth grader at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. And then, for the back, we couldn't resist Lillian's Happy Planet to thank our sponsors. The program has sponsored the purchase of the t-shirts, and this year, our 25th anniversary party on the Saturday before Memorial Day is sponsored by Art and Frame, Bignetic, Claire and Don and Lazy Mikes, Don Bya Volvo, Dr. Paul Cannon of the Falls Church Foot and Ankle Center, the Falls Church Garden Club, Falls Church Village Preservation and Improvement Society, Family Medicine in Falls Church, this evening represented by Gordon, the O'Hara Law Firm, Point of View Eyewear, and the Rotary Club of Falls Church. We also owe special thanks to the Falls Church Annandale Lions Club, because they sponsor not only the t-shirts, but the engraving of plaques for those children who complete the program in every year of their elementary schools. This is just one of those plaques, but there are, I think, four for Thomas Jefferson and three for St. James. That's a lot of children who've shown enormous dedication to environmental programs. Lillian, you could turn around if you like. So this year's plaque honorees, those who've done Operation Earth Watch six months every year for every year of their elementary school careers, are Charlie Alexander, Adam Bellouard, Catherine Stain, Alex Urcohart, and Eddie Wang at Thomas Jefferson, and Erin Kowalski and James Tobin at St. James Catholic School. So I think the city owes an enormous debt of gratitude to our children. I think they really motivate their parents and the community to do the right thing by the environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fantastic.
Okay, so the kids...
Why don't you all come forward, and we can give you our congratulations and thanks. Fantastic job. I love those t-shirts.
(inaudible) Oh, yes. Thanks. So this is an annual event, and it's an honor that we are able to recognize an Employee of the Year who has really done outstanding work. The Employee of the Year is an annual program, are nominated by either their coworkers or members of the community. And then, this year, we had eight nominees and a hard decision, but the cream rose to the top, and we're going to celebrate Ibi this evening. The Employee Review Board is chartered through the city code. They are appointed by City Council, so they are an independent body that reviews these nominations. They're submitted to HR. We send it to them. They review, and they make a recommendation. And so we're honored to have this evening event. The Review Board prepares a letter, which we have here this evening, that encapsulates the summary of the nominations from all of Ibi's coworkers. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bawa to share those good works. I'll add a little comments, and then we have a little bit of recognition as well. And as Mr. Shields indicated, we will give Ibi the floor at the end, but she's got to wait until we celebrate her first.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to read this for Ms. Acosta. Dear Ms. Acosta, it is with great pleasure and sincere thanks for your creativity and hard work during 2017 that we congratulate you on your selection as 2017 Falls Church City Employee of the Year. Your 2017 work extended far beyond what might be expected of a senior administrative assistant in the Finance Division, working on payroll and accounting payables. Your work beyond your normal assigned duties began when you realized that the city records contractor was charging too much and performing poorly. You learned this by examining record boxes in City Hall and off-site at the contractor's storage. Your findings resulted in contracting with a new records company that saved the city money and improved service that complied with state requirements. Once the vacating of the City Hall became necessary to accommodate a major renovation of City Hall, it must have been obvious to you that, based on your recent records experience, you could play an important role in facilitating the movement of staff and records to temporary space outside the City Hall. And so began your task, which others subsequently described as beyond Herculean. While continuing to perform your regular duties, you took the lead in organizing and overseeing the move, which included organizing an oversight group, securing appropriate record boxes and materials, and developing instructions and guidance, as well as being available for all the questions that followed. The Chief of Police was sufficiently pleased with your performance, and you were honored by being selected Employee of the Fourth Quarter of 2017 in recognition of your leadership in preparation for the temporary move and skill with police records. Therefore, on behalf of the Falls Church community, please accept our gratitude for your dedicated work and our congratulations. For the...
Now, some of the funness behind Ibi's work, we actually saw her skill set back a few years ago when she was in Public Works, and she overtook reevaluating all of our Dominion Energy Virginia accounts, which are a lot when you think of all the streetlights, the park lights, the traffic signals, and cleaned up those accounting, got rid of duplicates, and made sure we were only paying for things that are in the city. That, and then the artwork at City Hall, I do want to highlight, besides all those boxes and records and important things that needed to go to archive through proper record retention and also temporary storage because they're coming back, she took special care of all of the art, whether it was the quilt, the portraits in chambers, or some of our dedication plaques to make sure they were properly packaged and stored so they're safe when they return at the end of this year. So those are just some additional things to the kind summary words that the Employee Review Board did. Tenacious and organized and persistent are good descriptions of Ibi because she gets the job done. And so with that, Megan, if you'd like to come up and share what you have in your hand.
Ibi, I have here the Hall of Fame Employees of the Year dating all the way back to 1987. Oh, yes. And you're here, right here, Elizabeth Ibi Acosta.
Yes, thank you.
So thank you for your service to the city, and you'll be on the wall for years to come.
This is illustrious people here.
Yep, some big names here.
Yeah, big names.
Would you like to say anything? You're welcome to.
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. In the process of finding out the records that the city had stored for more than 10 years at the place that I will not name, it was clear that a lot of the boxes contained things that we really didn't need. But the boxes also contained some pretty important historical records, and I can show you the original water coupons from 1938, and I can show you a lot of very interesting things. But here's something that was really interesting to me. And Mary, the chief, had mentioned that I have a public service heart, and if I do, it's because I come by it genetically. So in uncovering these records, I have in front of me a letter dated April 16, 1990, and this was addressed to Mr. Kenneth Burnett, congratulating him on his nomination for Employee of the Year. Now, I don't know why he didn't win, since now he has a building named after him, but apparently he lost out in 1990. But the interesting thing for me was that this letter is signed by my father, Francis J. Acosta, who was on the City Employees Review Board, as well as the School Board and the Electoral Board. And as many of you know, there's a monument to my parents in front of the library. And this is all to say that one of the things that has distinguished Falls Church since its beginning has been the service of its citizens. And, you know, we grew up on Maple Avenue, and we saw the history of people dedicated. My sister went to school with Silversteins. I went to school with Wellses. I mean, this was about, you know, service. The residents worked to make the city a better place. Oh, hey, let's have a thing called Citizens for a Better City, and let's have a thing called Friends of the Library. So I come by it through my parents, and I've been fortunate enough to come to work for the city and to have been able to use my special tenacious and sometimes salty strengths to help you, and I will continue to do so in the future. So thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Why don't you come forward? Ibi, why don't you come forward and receive our thanks? Thank you so much. And Falls Church is really about the people, and that's a high honor indeed here in the city, so congratulations. Our next special presentation is regarding Operation Earth Watch. Mr. Shields, who's doing, oh, you coming up? Indeed, well, come on down. Welcome.
Good evening. If I could just invite everyone who's been involved with Operation Earth Watch to join me. So our sponsors, volunteers, staff, support, and the children who designed this year's t-shirt, please.
Not all at once. Come on down, everyone. Yeah, they're good. Everyone with a t-shirt on, come on down, and then some.
So Operation Earth Watch is the city's environmental action program for elementary schoolchildren. It's been running for 25 years now. This is our 25th anniversary. So over that time, probably about 4,000 children have worked on their own on environmental projects and recruited their parents to adopt more environmentally friendly ways in the city. And as Ibi mentioned, like so many of the great programs in Falls Church, it was started by volunteers. Diane Landry, Mary Bumgarner, Mia Mussolini, Barry Bushow, Melissa Teetz, were all key figures in starting the program, supported by that very memorable city staff person, Annette Mills, later by Kathy Allen, Allison Lorenz, Chris McGowan, and now I support the program. But it is still run by volunteers. Sarah Beeman-Balden leads the program and does all the work at TJ. And then Susan Matchet supports at Mount Daniel, and Laurel Ruhlend at St. James. And this year, we've actually recruited a cadre, a new cadre of volunteers. They're led by Anu Gupta and Naomi Goodwin, plus student members of the ESC. So the ESC has six student members this year, and three of them are supporting Operation Earth Watch: Hannah Trauberman, Evelyn Duras, and Katie Deal. So it goes on. Each child who participates every month of the school year gets a free t-shirt to wear in the Memorial Day Parade, and each year, the t-shirt features designs by program participants. Sylvia, would you step forward, please? Out there, so they can see your t-shirt. So the front of the t-shirt this year was Sylvia's design. Sylvia's a fourth grader at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. And then, for the back, we couldn't resist Lillian's Happy Planet to thank our sponsors. The program has sponsored the purchase of the t-shirts, and this year, our 25th anniversary party on the Saturday before Memorial Day is sponsored by Art and Frame, Bignetic, Claire and Don and Lazy Mikes, Don Bya Volvo, Dr. Paul Cannon of the Falls Church Foot and Ankle Center, the Falls Church Garden Club, Falls Church Village Preservation and Improvement Society, Family Medicine in Falls Church, this evening represented by Gordon, the O'Hara Law Firm, Point of View Eyewear, and the Rotary Club of Falls Church. We also owe special thanks to the Falls Church Annandale Lions Club, because they sponsor not only the t-shirts, but the engraving of plaques for those children who complete the program in every year of their elementary schools. This is just one of those plaques, but there are, I think, four for Thomas Jefferson and three for St. James. That's a lot of children who've shown enormous dedication to environmental programs. Lillian, you could turn around if you like. So this year's plaque honorees, those who've done Operation Earth Watch six months every year for every year of their elementary school careers, are Charlie Alexander, Adam Bellouard, Catherine Stain, Alex Urcohart, and Eddie Wang at Thomas Jefferson, and Erin Kowalski and James Tobin at St. James Catholic School. So I think the city owes an enormous debt of gratitude to our children. I think they really motivate their parents and the community to do the right thing by the environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fantastic.
Okay, so the kids...
Why don't you all come forward, and we can give you our congratulations and thanks. Fantastic job. I love those t-shirts.
(inaudible) Oh, yes. Thanks. So this is an annual event, and it's an honor that we are able to recognize an Employee of the Year who has really done outstanding work. The Employee of the Year is an annual program, are nominated by either their coworkers or members of the community.
Yes, we do administer oaths of office to all our board and commission members. So it's a little bit more formal in the council chambers, but since we're here, I'm sorry, we have your backs to everybody. Should we rotate, people?
Sure, we can roll through whatever you'd like.
If you just rotate sort of this way, so your parents can see you.
Turn 180 degrees and back up. There you go. Maybe I'll use this light. I'll use this. And then we'll get a photo.
Just like Jeter Rogers do with heels on.
Yeah. And just so you can see me. Okay, so the way this works is you just raise your right hand, and you repeat after me. So I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent.
As a member of -- and then state the name of your board.
As a member of the Office of Special and Special.
Good job. According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you, and thank you for serving. And we will send you some certificates to prove that you are serving on the boards, and we will find some work for you, too. Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Thanks so much. Thank you. Thank you. Very much. All right. How are you doing? Thanks for signing. Go forward. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I forgot I didn't have an oath. I had to take somebody else's oath.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Good job, you guys.
All right. Thank you.
Hey! Good. That name keeps freaking us out. Wait, that can't be right.
You're in meetings. Mr. Mayor, how are you? Thank you for volunteering.
Can I just take a quick minute and just introduce myself?
Sure. After they take the photo, just wait right there, and I'll let the mayor know. And Julie wants to say something afterwards. If you could put a bug in the mayor's ear.
Do what?
Put a bug in the mayor's ear. Julie would like to just say a few words when you're done.
Okay, sure. In the middle, here we go.
Where's Letty?
All right, there's tons of cameras, so take one of them.
Look at your mom.
That's it?
All right.
Yay!
Thank you.
I just want to introduce myself. I'm Julie Crachman, and I've emailed all these folks, and we just look forward to having them serve on CBC's premier program, where we get these who are already primed to do volunteer work in this city, of your service, and we look forward to working with you guys over the years. Right, and Sunday night is the annual meeting of the -- thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all. Here's the thank you. Thank you. Fairly well.
It's crazy. I know, be careful. I'm laughing just all day. It's my day, too.
All right. Thank you all. We're looking forward to your service and your new ideas and fresh perspective. So what a great group of kids. Our next item is a proclamation, and that is declaring May 20 through 26 as Public Works Week. And we have some folks from Public Works here in the audience. Mr. Lichtenhouse is going to do the honors on this proclamation. Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the Department of Public Works manages the infrastructure, facilities, and services essential to the city of Falls Church as a sustainable and resilient committee -- community. And whereas the city's Public Works professionals provide a wide range of programs, project management, and services, including those related to city streets and sidewalks, traffic signals, stormwater management, sewers, environmental services, signage, public buildings, fleet maintenance, urban forestry and green spaces, snow removal, leaf collection, and recycling and solid waste collection. And whereas Public Works staff provide expertise in engineering, geospatial information systems, grants administration, procurement, contracts, construction management, and implementation of the city's capital improvements program. And whereas these dynamic services are dependent upon the dedicated efforts of Public Works employees, whose vision is working together to sustain and enhance our community's infrastructure and provide a safe, green, and clean environment. And whereas the support of an informed citizenry is of a fundamental importance to encouraging those responsible for sustaining the city's infrastructure. And whereas the year 2018 marks the 58th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And whereas this year's theme for National Public Works Week is "The Power of Public Works," in recognition of the powerful impact which Public Works has on citizens' lives, and it invites the public to celebrate the quiet dedication and indispensable influence of Public Works employees.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20 through the 26th, 2018, as Public Works Week in the City of Falls Church, and urge citizens to join in recognizing the dynamic and essential contributions of the city's Public Works staff. Mr. Shields, do we have some folks from Public Works who would like to?
We've got -- you might be able to tell who's in the room with us with the safety vest, but let me turn it over to Mr. Whitfield, and I think we're going to have some other speakers from Public Works as well.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Can we start over? Anyway, thank you for this recognition. And so we did do something a little bit different. And so I know that Lonnie Marquetti and Mary Beth Conley had worked together with Mary Ellen Henderson, and we had a little contest. And this is something that we thought would be very great for, you know, Public Works and the community, and getting the schools involved. And so what we did is we had a little art contest. And so that art contest involved, what is Public Works? And just put a theme out there, see what we came back with with some art. And so we had some really great entries. And so what we did, we had a training class. All 43 employees of Public Works were in a big room down at the property yard. We put all the, excuse me, artwork up on the wall, and we actually voted, which one do we want to present here tonight to you? And also, present some other items that we've had some donations from Crazy Mikes, 3Ps, and also Claire &amp; Don's. And so we'd like to present this, as well as some yard signs that we made up, and it's of the artwork. And so this is some really talented work. We had a lot of good artwork, and so it was very difficult to pick one, but I'll try and get your name right. Itirzon Gallagher, if you could please come up. So this is our winner. Did I pronounce that right? I didn't. I didn't think I did. So this is our winner of the art. Chris? There you are. And this is what she did. And so we would like you to take this home and make your parents put it in the front yard. And we also have some other items for you.
We do.
And this is our appreciation for your thoughts of Public Works.
Thank you so much. We thought we'd get you some flowers to go with your hard hat, signed by Public Works staff.
That is good.
And as Mike mentioned, there are some gift certificates here, and a whole bunch of goodies for you. So thank you so much.
Yeah, well done.
For your heart. We love you.
Yeah, come on up a little closer, maybe.
Let's do one with just our winner and her sign, and you know, flowers.
Yeah, someone take the flowers.
Oh, and wear your hat. You've got to wear your hat.
Got to wear your hat.
You've got to wear the hat, though. Uh-oh. Awesome. Yes. All right, you have to put up and shake hands. Yep. There we go. Mom knows what I'm talking about, or that. That's cool. I got you.
We actually have more, if you could indulge.
There's more to come.
There's more to come.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Keep it rolling.
All right. So what we'd like to do now is we do have quite a few of the Public Works staff here, and we have a lot of program managers. And so I've asked them all in their programs and their expertise area if they would just give you a quick 60-second overview of what they do.
All right, sounds good.
And so first up would be Chris McGar, Solid Waste Coordinator.
All right, welcome.
Yes. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Public Works manages all of the solid waste functions in the city. That's 9,000 weekly collections, to the battery recycling box that's here inside the community center, I hope you all recycle batteries, to programs like our compost program that bring us closer to zero waste. So Public Works does a lot with trash and recycling.
Thank you. Good job. All right, who's next?
Kate Walker.
Welcome back. Long time no see.
Here I am, disguised as Public Works. I work very closely with these guys, and it's a real privilege. Even I go out once a month and work with the operations crew, Green Space Management, so that I am actually out there in the environment that I so busily coordinate. And actually, this year, though, of course, I'm going to be pulling together the effort to put together the community's new environmental chapter of the comprehensive plan. So I'll be working very closely with Kate Reich, and Jason Widstrom, and Chris, to get their parts of that chapter pulled in as part of our community effort.
Thank you much.
And Kate Reich, Chair Arborist.
All right.
Oops, so I wouldn't forget one. So as city arborist, my main job is to maintain and expand the tree canopy in Falls Church. To do that, I am responsible for the health and safety of each of about 10,000 trees that are on city-owned property. I review all site plans, grading plans, and CIP plans for conformance with tree and landscape requirements, and ensure follow-through during the project. I manage all tree-related permits and tree contractor licensing. I enforce the tree and landscape codes, answer questions from the public, and am liaison to the Tree Commission.
All right, thank you.
Andrew Peters, our GIS manager.
To be brief, I take data from everyone, from the transportation engineer, to the arborists, to stormwater and sanitary sewer, and mash it up together to make maps and to better understand the relationships of those things to one another, where pipes cross roads, where pipes cross streams, where traffic signals are down, and detours now have to be put in place.
Thank you much. Thank you for your good work.
And Karen Battle, she's our Public Resources Manager.
All right.
Good evening, Council. I do have the privilege of heading the Public Resources Team, and there are four of us. I handle the procurement and the contracts for Public Works. We have about 90 term contractors, contracts right now, and in addition to that, quite a few construction contracts for our CIP projects. Also on my team, you just heard from Andrew Peters with Geospatial Information Systems, and two people who could not be here tonight, who are part of the hidden gears of the Public Resources Team that you don't get to see very often, and that's Gina Freyberg. She's our Grants Administrator. And she let me know a few months ago that during the first three quarters of this fiscal year, she had handled over $2 million in grant reimbursements. That's a lot of paperwork. Lonnie Marquetti is our Customer Services Specialist, and she is often the first face or the first voice for the public who have questions about or want to report something to Public Works. But she's also really, she excels at putting together logistics and details for many, many functions for us and keeping us running day to day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And of course, Robert Goff, our Superintendent.
All right, come on down.
They told me I had to go last, they said I talked too much, so. But it's only because I have such a big department. All of you know me, Robert Goff, Superintendent of Operations. Operations consists of 28 people, 28 employees. We basically cover it all. Matter of fact, Kathy and I, Alan and I, just left the library, we were dealing with a flooding issue. So facilities is a big part of what we do in operations, as well as street maintenance, as well as snow removal, leaf collection, curb and gutter replacement when needed, sidewalk replacement, potholes filled in the wintertime. Claim to fame is our snow removal. I think we do a great job using the least amount of salt, that I believe in the region, anyway. And also our storm sewer system, that we maintain about 14,000 linear feet of pipe each year that we have to maintain. Our storm sewer system, our sanitary sewer system, which is 74 miles of pipeline, that we also maintain with a three-man crew. So we cover it all. From any service that is provided to the citizens of Falls Church, our role is to make sure that taxpayers get the best bang for their buck. That's what we do.
I think we do, so thank you much. Great job.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And that was all of us. I think we've taken enough of your time.
All right, thank you much. Come on down. Good job, y'all. Come on down. We'll get a photo.
Okay, we'll get the other half of the team on this side. Keep going, keep going. Keep going, you can. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. There we go, Ross, that's what I'm talking about. All right.
Thank you. Thank you all for a job. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for a job. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Keep it rolling.
All right. So what we'd like to do now is we do have quite a few of the Public Works staff here, and we have a lot of program managers. And so I've asked them all in their programs and their expertise area if they would just give you a quick 60-second overview of what they do.
All right, sounds good.
And so first up would be Chris McGar, Solid Waste Coordinator.
All right, welcome.
Yes. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Public Works manages all of the solid waste functions in the city. That's 9,000 weekly collections, to the battery recycling box that's here inside the community center, I hope you all recycle batteries, to programs like our compost program that bring us closer to zero waste. So Public Works does a lot with trash and recycling.
Thank you. Good job. All right, who's next?
Kate Walker.
Welcome back. Long time no see.
Here I am, disguised as Public Works. I work very closely with these guys, and it's a real privilege. Even I go out once a month and work with the operations crew, Green Space Management, so that I am actually out there in the environment that I so busily coordinate. And actually, this year, though, of course, I'm going to be pulling together the effort to put together the community's new environmental chapter of the comprehensive plan. So I'll be working very closely with Kate Reich, and Jason Widstrom, and Chris, to get their parts of that chapter pulled in as part of our community effort.
Thank you much.
And Kate Reich, Chair Arborist.
All right.
Oops, so I wouldn't forget one. So as city arborist, my main job is to maintain and expand the tree canopy in Falls Church. To do that, I am responsible for the health and safety of each of about 10,000 trees that are on city-owned property. I review all site plans, grading plans, and CIP plans for conformance with tree and landscape requirements, and ensure follow-through during the project. I manage all tree-related permits and tree contractor licensing. I enforce the tree and landscape codes, answer questions from the public, and am liaison to the Tree Commission.
All right, thank you.
Andrew Peters, our GIS manager.
To be brief, I take data from everyone, from the transportation engineer, to the arborists, to stormwater and sanitary sewer, and mash it up together to make maps and to better understand the relationships of those things to one another, where pipes cross roads, where pipes cross streams, where traffic signals are down, and detours now have to be put in place.
Thank you much. Thank you for your good work.
And Karen Battle, she's our Public Resources Manager.
All right.
Good evening, Council. I do have the privilege of heading the Public Resources Team, and there are four of us. I handle the procurement and the contracts for Public Works. We have about 90 term contractors, contracts right now, and in addition to that, quite a few construction contracts for our CIP projects. Also on my team, you just heard from Andrew Peters with Geospatial Information Systems, and two people who could not be here tonight, who are part of the hidden gears of the Public Resources Team that you don't get to see very often, and that's Gina Freyberg. She's our Grants Administrator. And she let me know a few months ago that during the first three quarters of this fiscal year, she had handled over $2 million in grant reimbursements. That's a lot of paperwork. Lonnie Marquetti is our Customer Services Specialist, and she is often the first face or the first voice for the public who have questions about or want to report something to Public Works. But she's also really, she excels at putting together logistics and details for many, many functions for us and keeping us running day to day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And of course, Robert Goff, our Superintendent.
All right, come on down.
They told me I had to go last, they said I talked too much, so. But it's only because I have such a big department. All of you know me, Robert Goff, Superintendent of Operations. Operations consists of 28 people, 28 employees. We basically cover it all. Matter of fact, Kathy and I, Alan and I, just left the library, we were dealing with a flooding issue. So facilities is a big part of what we do in operations, as well as street maintenance, as well as snow removal, leaf collection, curb and gutter replacement when needed, sidewalk replacement, potholes filled in the wintertime. Claim to fame is our snow removal. I think we do a great job using the least amount of salt, that I believe in the region, anyway. And also our storm sewer system, that we maintain about 14,000 linear feet of pipe each year that we have to maintain. Our storm sewer system, our sanitary sewer system, which is 74 miles of pipeline, that we also maintain with a three-man crew. So we cover it all. From any service that is provided to the citizens of Falls Church, our role is to make sure that taxpayers get the best bang for their buck. That's what we do.
I think we do, so thank you much. Great job.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And that was all of us. I think we've taken enough of your time.
All right, thank you much. Come on down. Good job, y'all. Come on down. We'll get a photo.
Okay, we'll get the other half of the team on this side. Keep going, keep going. Keep going, you can. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. There we go, Ross, that's what I'm talking about. All right.
Thank you. Thank you all for a job. Thank you. Thank you all for a job. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connolly.
So before everybody goes, I just, I don't know, I have one thing, well, a couple things I want to say. One is that a lot of people that just spoke are also wonderful volunteers with Falls Church City Public Schools. And I, almost all of you have shown up to speak in classes, volunteer, do all sorts of things. Today, we had four Public Works trucks at the middle school, and sixth graders were thrilled to climb all over them and mess with the lights, and that was a great experience as well. So the sixth graders who entered the art contest, some of them were able to enter, and some of them didn't have time to get their work done in time. But the art teacher did a great presentation to these kids about what Public Works is using the information on the website. And so I have a whole stack of additional pieces of artwork that the kids have made for you as a gift. They heard that your offices might need some decoration. So, so now you have lots of art that you can have. So come on up and get it. I was really careful not to get it wet on the way over here. But there's some great pictures there. And I really do thank you for all the times that you've come into the schools and worked with students and worked with teachers and shared your knowledge that way, too, because you've been great educators.
All right. Thank you all, and you guys get the job done. I mean, that's the bottom line. So we appreciate it. Our next proclamation is declaring June 1, 2018, as Gun Violence Awareness Day here in the city. And for that, Mr. Snyder's going to have the honors.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And there is a relationship between this proclamation and the one that we'll issue in a couple minutes regarding Police Officers Memorial, an unfortunate connection. Whereas more than 96 Americans are killed every day by gun violence and many others are injured, 96 a day. Whereas protecting public safety is local government's highest responsibility. And whereas to honor those whose lives are cut short by shootings and those who are injured, a national coalition of organizations is designated June 1, 2018, as the Fourth Annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the friends of Hattie Pendleton, a teenager shot and killed soon after marching in the 2013 presidential inaugural parade, asked classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange on her birthday, because the color orange is worn by hunters for safety and also symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas all citizens can help raise awareness about gun violence by pledging to wear orange on June 1. And whereas Falls Church is committed to reducing gun violence, keeping firearms out of the wrong hands, and encouraging gun owners to practice safe and responsible gun ownership.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim June 1, 2018, as Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Falls Church, and urge citizens to wear orange on June 1, 2018, to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Do we have anyone in the audience, Chief Gavin, who'd like to speak to this matter?
Yes, I'd just like, on behalf of the 30,000 Americans that are killed each year by gun violence, I stand here for them. I also just want to reemphasize that our commitments are really defined by our words. And so I appreciate, again, Council taking a stand on gun violence. It's so very important. And as Mr. Snyder said, the next proclamation, I'll speak to that as well.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, our next presentation, is actually declaring May 2018 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I believe Ms. Hardy's going to do the honors.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. As Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have flourished and succeeded in the City of Falls Church and are a vital part of the city's history, making important contributions to the cultural, civic, and economic life of the city. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander populations are comprised of many languages and ethnicities, contributing to diversity and energy of the City of Falls Church in the Northern Virginia area. And whereas Congress chose the month of May for the observance to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May 7, 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad of May 10, 1869. And whereas Asian Americans make up an estimated 5.6% of the US population. And whereas the Asian American Pacific Islander community is projected increase from comprising 14.6% of Falls Church's population to 15.2% by 2021. And whereas Falls Church's Eden Center contains the highest concentration of Vietnamese-owned businesses under one roof and continues to attract Vietnamese and Vietnamese-American tourists, as well as people of all ethnicities who enjoy delicious food and a vibrant shopping experience.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Falls Church, and call upon all citizens to recognize the many contributions and achievements of the city's Asian and Pacific Islander Americans. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this matter?
Yes, I wanted to invite a couple of people up and speak as well. So come on up.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Lin Huang. Thank you, Mayor David Tarter, Councilwoman Letty Hardy, Councilman Denzie, and all Councilmember for presenting me and our community with the AAPI Heritage Month proclamation. May is an exciting month, and I celebrate AAPI Heritage Month because it reminds me of the importance of telling our stories, claiming our stories, and retelling where we have been so that we don't forget. Immigrants contributed to the rich tapestry and success of the City of Falls Church. I'm mindful that I have a chance at the American dream because of the people who came before me and helped open the doors of opportunities. So let's celebrate our shared heritage. Let's celebrate our shared accomplishments, but also let be mindful that there is still a lot of work ahead to build a more welcoming and inclusive community for all. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Why don't you come forward? Ms. Hardy?
Two quick things I just wanted to point out. Thank you for your remarks, Mr. Wong. I think as a first-generation immigrant, I'm proud to have you up here speaking and representing the Asian American population. I also wanted to note that the proclamation, I think for the first time, is actually translated in Vietnamese. I appreciate the work that the clerk and Lin had done together to kind of get that done. I think it's an important way to recognize that our community is very diverse. And noting that, I think the statistics that we read is that, you know, we have three times the Asian population compared to the rest of the US. And so recognizing that Falls Church is a diverse place, I think I'm proud, along with Mr. Z, to be the two Asian Americans elected to City Council, that we finally have representatives that are reflective of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Our next proclamation is declaring May 13 through 19 as Police Week in Falls Church and Peace Officers Memorial Day. Mr. Duncan, will you do the honors, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed the first proclamation recognizing May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas police officers throughout the Commonwealth are dedicated to protecting and serving Virginia's neighborhoods, schools, and families. And whereas police officers risk their lives each and every day in order to ensure public safety and enforce the laws of the land. And whereas citizens value the courage and devotion of the Commonwealth state and local police and the integrity with which law enforcement officers maintain peace and security. And whereas Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day are opportunities to honor officers who have fallen in the line of duty and recognize the sacrifices made by the families of those officers and the sacrifices made by families of those who continue to protect and serve our communities.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby recognize May 13 through 19, 2018, as Police Week, and May 15, 2018, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Falls Church, and call these observances to the attention of all our citizens. Chief Gavin?
It's just so right that we're up here tonight with Public Works, because there's nothing that we do, don't do in this job without Public Works. I mean, we are hand-in-hand, particularly in every natural disaster, in some man-made disasters. So it's a privilege to be here with them and Employee of the Year, who helped us throughout this past year, be the department that we are. But there are nearly 900,000 police officers in the United States. There's 23,000 in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and you have 32 here in Falls Church. The four that I would highlight here today, as I've highlighted one each year, are the ones that we lost this year in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And on March 7, we lost a deputy in Carroll County, a trooper, I mean, excuse me, a deputy Bartlet to a vehicle accident, which takes so many officers each and every year. And then on May 27, we lost a trooper named Michael Walters in the city of Richmond, protecting a low-income housing neighborhood in a suspicious activity to gunfire. On the fateful day of April, I mean, excuse me, August 12 in Charlottesville, we lost two of our state troopers, a Lieutenant Cullen and a Trooper Bates, that were piloting Trooper 1 in protection of the governor's detail and the superintendent's detail in Charlottesville. So for those four Commonwealth peace officers, I stand here and I thank you. And I thank all of the city that supports our police officers, because we do feel supported. This is a wonderful community to police. There's no greater place to police, and it's a, it's a, it's a privilege, even in this time, this violent time, to be in this noble profession, because we're making great strides and great change. And we feel your support, and we thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you, and thank you for your good work and all your colleagues. We greatly appreciate it. Job well done.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to thank Gary Laporta from the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office for wrangling a group of us once again this year to, on Saturday, be there on the bridge at Seven Corners to greet the cyclists of the Police Unity Tour as they rode through on their way from Richmond to the Officers Memorial downtown in DC. And the chief was there with her car, and it was a pleasure to see a hearty band of Falls Churchers. They seemed to be well-received.
Would you like to come forward and get the, receive the proclamation?
So, Mr. Mayor, tonight, we have to, we're limited to issuing proclamations, two of them relating to gun violence. And my hope is, in the future, we'll be able to do more than issue proclamations. Our president talked about the Second Amendment being a God-given right. Well, the signers of the Declaration of Independence said our God-given rights were life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I go with the founders of this country as opposed to our current president. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I hope that in the future, we'll be able to do much more than we've been able to do so far. And I know that's the desire and intent of many of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last proclamation is regarding Watershed and Flood Plane Awareness Month. And Mr. Z will be doing the honors, I believe. Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the streams and tributaries that flow above and below the ground through the city of Falls Church are part of an interconnected watershed system that carries water from rooftops, yards, streets, and parking lots into the Potomac River and the Chesapeake Bay. And whereas the City of Falls Church is committed to improving and protecting these precious waters as habitat for plant and animal life, as a recreational resource, and as drinking water, both now and in the future. And whereas there are currently 213 commercial and residential properties in the Falls Church City portion of the tripped-run and four-mile-run floodplains. And whereas the city participates in the National Flood Insurance Program's community rating system, which recognizes and encourages community floodplain management, and through which flood insurance rates may be reduced to reflect the reduced flood risk resulting from community activities that meet targeted goals. And whereas the city provides opportunities to residents, businesses, schools, churches, and organizations to participate in watershed and floodplain education efforts. And whereas many citizen, city residents have responded by participating in programs that serve to raise awareness about what individuals can do on their own properties, in their homes, and through their transportation choices to improve water quality and minimize their impact on the floodplain. And whereas the city has undertaken a citywide comprehensive effort to examine our watershed and to develop a plan for improving it, and recognize the importance of increasing public awareness of watershed and floodplain protection.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Watershed and Flood Plane Awareness Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize the importance of this observation and to participate in the watershed and floodplain protection activities. Is there anyone from the city or elsewhere who's going to be receiving? Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for recognizing this important month for us in the stormwater industry. It's, nights like tonight is very fitting, as we heard the thunder and lightning earlier. And those who are in the floodplain, these types of storms, they cause some consternation for people. So it's really important that we get the message out about the importance of what we do on our land use and how we, you know, channel the stormwater, how that impacts people downstream of us. So again, I thank you for this opportunity, and I'll plug Public Works, is that we're always happy to meet with any residents, to go over any stormwater concerns they might have at their site. They can give us a call, and we're happy to meet them out there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the great work you do, and stay dry if you can tonight. Is there anyone else who'd like to say anything? Thank you so much. You want to receive the proclamation? Come on up. All right. Is there anyone in the audience who hasn't received a proclamation tonight? If not, we'll get one ready for you. Okay, I think that's it for the proclamations. So thank you all for sticking through that. Do we have any oaths of office to administer, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
All right. How about receipt of public comments?
I do have some written comments.
All right.
Ron Brusseau forwarded information about Alexandria's recent affordable housing initiative. Betty Patera of 912 Park Avenue requested that builders be required to provide physical affordable housing units instead of money in lieu of the units. Jonathan McNair, who's the Executive Director of the Northern Virginia Juvenile Detention Center, forwarded a rebuttal to a news article about the center. Frederick Foss of 119 East Jefferson Street complained about trash collection and storage at Northgate. And Sajila Ramsey of 100 Parker Street complained about construction traffic on West Street.
All right. And now for receipt of public comment. If anyone does wish to speak, we'd ask that you fill out a pink speaker slip. Oh, we do have one speaker. Fill out a speaker slip such as this. And when you get to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. And if you'd be so kind, keep your comments to three minutes. So we do have one speaker at this point. If anyone else would like to speak, again, fill out the speaker slip and hand it to the clerk. Our first speaker is Charles Plymire. Welcome to you, sir. Thank you for coming out and braving the weather.
I'll keep it brief, which is hard for me. First of all, thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, Phil, for prompting me to get here. We would have done it sooner, just couldn't. I'm here to present a petition, which I have in my hand, signed by 21. We have five more signatures we're trying to get. Some people are away. So I'm going to hold back the petition and give it to the clerk once I get the other five people addressed. It's concerning a variety of issues on West Marshall Street. Again, my name is Charles Plymire. I live at 115 West Marshall Street in Falls Church, Virginia. And I'm just going to go ahead and read the petition and then make a couple comments. The residents of West Marshall Street, Falls Church, Virginia 22046, petition the City of Falls Church City Council on matters pertaining to the condition and safety of the streets thoroughfare and sidewalks of West Marshall Street. Specifically, the residents are concerned about, one, the existing sidewalks and their condition. They are crumbling, have makeshift repairs, and aren't safe. Two, the lack of sidewalks at the end of the street at South Washington Street, which compromise the safety of pedestrians, especially those who use mass transit. Three, the street thoroughfare in general is heavily cracked, poorly patched, and crumbling. The overall condition is poor. Four, the traffic volume continues to increase and exceeds the reasonable limit. For a residential street such as West Marshall, existing speed humps, two of them, are deteriorating rapidly. We, the residents of West Marshall Street, therefore, request the City of Falls Church to properly address, restore, fix, and improve these issues immediately. A couple comments. We have, are trying to request a meeting face-to-face in our neighborhood with some city officials, so we can walk the street with them, really point out, no photographs, none of that nonsense. We really want your FaceTime, and we want to take you to the top of the street, which is one of the biggest concerns, with the lack of sidewalks. We also know that a bond apparently was secured at some point. For the development of those sidewalks at the top of the street, there was a developer who built two homes and owned the property at the corner. That property now has left his hands and was sold to a real estate company in Fairfax somewhere or something. So I think the developer's off the hook on the development of those. It also appears that the bond was partially refunded. No one can give us, appears, reasons why. I have documentation that I can share with you later at another time. A traffic study was done by my persistence in 2017. The police department, during that period of about a week, concluded that speeding was not an issue as we all thought there was. It was really a volume issue. We're shy of 10,000 vehicle commutes on our street as a total sum between the days of Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And that's it. That's all. We would like some attention. It's been 18 years since the speed humps were put in. The former mayor, I forget his first name was Hal, I don't remember his last name, was, was the reason why we got them. But really has become a safety issue. The last thing I want to just leave with you was, a new couple that just bought a home on the street was, she was using her baby carriage, going up the street and crossing. And where the right turn on red happens, there's no sidewalk in that side. And a lot of people simply don't stop and make the right turn on red. It's, I've had the same experience several weeks ago, and we both kind of just dive for wherever we can so we're not hit. And if there were sidewalks on the other side that we could stay on and use the crosswalk at the light, it would have been a much safer experience. Eventually, I think we're going to have a problem, and I hope that it doesn't happen. Thank you for your time. I will get a petition and some other things to the clerk, and we'll work with city officials. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
Well, Vice Mayor Connolly would like, I think, to say something. I'd also like a response from the city manager, but we can do it in whatever order people want to do it. Feel free to speak first.
I was just going to say, Mr. Plymire, I'm your neighbor one street over, and I know there is a lot of traffic in that neighborhood. There's a lot of cut-through, there's a lot of, when people try to avoid your traffic humps, they come down my street.
It spills over to the other streets.
And I almost got hit with my dog the other day by someone who was speeding up the street. So I think there's a lot of, in those narrow streets, a lot of traffic and volume. But 10,000 in a week is a lot of volume.
Right. And Jackson is really getting a lot now, too. Jackson is becoming a very bad street.
So I guess this is what Mr. Tarter's going to ask, but, Mr. Shields, what, the city has procedures for looking at streets like that? Can you just, how we would take a look at West Marshall Street? And would we need to look at Jackson and George Mason and Cameron and Greenway at the same time, because they're all part of the same system?
We do have a process for that. But I will say at the outset, I know Mr. Plymire is disappointed in me in terms of this meeting.
Okay. I just want to move on.
We will follow up. I think probably there is the normal process, where, you know, a problem comes to the city, and we work it through the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. And we've discussed that process before. We do have petitions now, and so that is a part of the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. But what we will do is to meet with you on the street as you've requested. I think that is always a helpful thing to do.
It's a big wrapper of things that, you know, it's more than the traffic calming at this point. And we recognize that the street has gone through some issues with the water and all that. And we noticed that some of the neighbors are like, well, the other streets got paved. Well, I did now. Or someone's saying, well, that's the gas company. Okay? But now it's gotten to the point where everything is just converging into one big mess. And that's why we think it needs attention sooner rather than later. Thank you.
We understand. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Shields, if you could follow up with us as --
We will.
Ms. Hardy?
So it's the first I've heard about this issue, but I'm curious whether the NTC program covers sidewalks as well. So I know I'm been, people in council know that I've been a big fan of actually trying to add sidewalks where we can, especially in our residential areas.
Well, when we get to the council work plan, we'll talk about, one of the items is the missing links of sidewalks. And this is a classic example of it. There's basically one house, one frontage that's missing to complete a link that would tie it into Route 29 and that sidewalk system. It won't be easy. There's some grade issues, and there's an easement that's needed. So it's not going to happen overnight. But there, I think what the purpose of that work plan item is, is to identify the funds for it and then, you know, work away at it. Because it, there's a number of them across the city, and this is a prime example.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Shields, several years ago, the neighbors on Cameron Road asked for a Neighborhood Traffic Calming petition. And at the time, they were told that they had to wrap in the rest of the neighborhood up through Marshall Street to be considered for Neighborhood Traffic Calming. And then that petition did not go forward because it was very difficult to get 50% of four streets' worth of people. And I'm wondering if, in looking at Marshall Street, is that something where we do have to look at the whole system of traffic in that neighborhood? Or can we look at Marshall Street on its own?
Well, one thing that is just a fact of that network of streets is that if you do something on one street, it will have an impact on the adjacent streets.
Right, right.
So I can't answer your question probably properly just here on the spot, but we will work the issue and try to assess what can be done, you know, here for these concerns, but also for the network of streets there.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments and hope that we --
Mr. Mayor, one more thing. If we could set up a time to walk the street with the neighbors, that would be a great thing, either individually or collectively. So let's try to work that out. Okay, well, maybe ask the city clerk to begin coordinating some dates that would work. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, let's move on to council requests. Are there any council requests before we get started with the rest of the meeting? All right. Let's go on to the report of the city manager. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. There's just two things. One is listed on here. We're joined by Monica Backman, who will give a presentation for the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority. Before we invite her forward, which we'll do in just a second, we do want to let the council is aware of this, and we've put out a press release today. But through the, through the work really of the city council and management working together with our community, we did get our bond ratings. We've just gotten notice of what our ratings will be for the May issuance. And the council is aware that we've been AAA rated by Fitch and by Standard &amp; Poor. And today, we were notified that we will be rated, we will be upgrade rated by Moody's. And so for the first time in the city's history, we will be a triple-triple, where the three major rating agencies all have deemed the city's creditworthiness to be at the highest level. And so that is a good, a great achievement, and one I think that we can, A, be proud of, and recognize also that a lot of hard work went into that, to change that, to achieve that rating. Our CFO, Ms. Bawa, has had a great leadership role in that. Mr. LaCondre, our former CFO, worked very hard to restore the city's financial condition with the city council after the recession. And former council member, Mr. Kalin, who the council recognized posthumously and celebrated his achievements, also was a really important leader in that effort. And so we're very pleased to make that announcement. And it's, the timing is perfect, obviously. We worked hard for this because we know we're making really major investments in our facilities, in our schools, in our library, in the City Hall Public Safety Project. And that those high ratings will lower the costs for all of our taxpayers and citizens. So congratulations on that achievement.
Thank you as well. So yeah, good stuff. I think that's a major accomplishment, and I am quite proud of our city in achieving those goals. I think it is a testament to our prudent fiscal policies and practices that we've enacted. And I am delighted as well that this will reduce the cost of borrowing for years to come for our city taxpayers. So I think it's a big accomplishment, and congratulations, I think, to all, so. Mr. Z?
Are you going to tell us, or maybe speculate on what effect that would have on the bond rate? Either percentage or dollar-wise, now that you, over the euphoria of getting a round of applause?
I don't know if we can quantify it exactly. Maybe we can. Maybe we can just try to produce that number. But what we do know is that gives us the lowest possible cost in the borrowing that is to come for the, for the high school in particular and for the library and City Hall.
Well, if you get it done before noon time on Wednesday, I'm sure lots of people would be grateful.
It would be somewhat speculative, but at any rate, it's a good thing for the taxpayers, for sure.
If I may, I'll just add that we are expected to sell on May 23 and close on June 6. So we will bring back the details of the issuance once we have it.
Yeah, and our thanks to you, of course, and Mr. Shields, and all of the staff that have worked very hard on this. It is a major accomplishment. All right.
So with that, then we'll now introduce Ms. Monica Backman, who has brought her daughter as well. Thank you very much, both of you, for coming. But we're honored to have you here tonight, and we know you have a report.
We do, so thank you.
And, but Ms. Backman, I'll just say, is someone that we work with very closely as the, as the chief executive for the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority. And we do a lot of work with NVTA, and the NVTA is doing a lot of really good work in the Northern Virginia area. So we'll turn the floor over to you, and thank you for being with us here tonight.
And thank you for having me here again. I'm Monica Backman, the executive director of the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority. I do want to take time to acknowledge Councilmember Snyder. He is our longest-serving authority member, or next to he and Mayor Pierce from Anasas. We've been around for 15 years, and when you don't have funds, people don't really care what you do. You can fly under the radar, and then when you get money, things change. And of course, Mr. Duncan is on the Authority's Planning Coordination Advisory Committee. I'm coming before you here tonight because the authority is undertaking a first, and we are in the process of developing our first six-year program. To date, we've had three funding programs. We had a 14 program, an FY15-16 program, and an FY17 program. So we've been doing things piecemeal. It was always our intent to get to a full six-year program, so we are actually on the cusp of doing that. I don't know who's advancing. Okay. So our statutory requirements, according to our enabling legislation, the authority is required to develop a long-range transportation plan amongst a lot of other things. But doing the long-range transportation plan is very important because our long-range transportation plan is actually tied to our funding. And what that means is when we had the funding bill, HB 2313, HB 2313 had two pass-filled triggers on any project that the authority funds. Number one, the project must be in our long-range transportation plan. And number two, the project must undergo the HB 599 evaluation. HB 599 was adopted a full year before HB 2313, and it essentially says that VDOT, in coordination with the authority and the Department of Rail and Public Transportation, evaluate projects for their congestion reduction abilities. And again, to date, we've done all of our three previous funding programs under transaction 2040, which was adopted about six months before HB 2313 was passed. And I'll tell you, the care level and level of concerns, even when doing the long-range transportation plan, when we did transaction 2040, again, people didn't care. So some, some localities didn't have projects. Then we, when we have funding, and the funding is tied to the long-range transportation plan, you can imagine the undertaking. So in October of last year, the authority adopted the update to transaction, which was the first since HB 2313 was adopted. We had about 300 or so projects, totaling $42 billion, and that's only capital monies only, but what's $42 billion amongst friends, you know? So we have a lot of funding requests. Again, we have, you see our three cover pages for our three long-range transportation plans. We actually did four. Transaction 2020 predated the authority. It was done by the Transportation Coordinating Council, which the authority kind of morphed into. So we had transaction 2030, 2040, and now our current long-range transportation plan, which is just transaction. The authority is required to prioritize our transportation projects. And the law, the funding bill, HB 2313, requires that we give priority to the projects that have the greatest level of congestion reduction relative to cost. The priority, too, is very important because it does not mean we have to take the projects per their congestion reduction relative to cost rank. But if we do not select projects in that order, we really need to justify and explain why we did so. So our revenues, when HB 2313 was passed, we received three revenue streams, sales tax, grantor's tax, and transient occupancy tax. 70% of the revenues come to the authority for regional transportation projects. 30% goes back to the localities in which the taxes and fees are raised, provided that the localities meet the certification requirements. And I do want to know, all the localities have met those requirements? That makes me very happy, because if they don't meet the requirements, the money goes back into the 70% pot, and you miss out on that 30% revenues. Now, I do have an asterisk regarding the revenues we've generated. HB 2313 currently brings in roughly about $330 million annually. As you all may be aware, the General Assembly action with the adoption of the conference report, that report, that bill does repeal two of our three revenue streams. It repeals transient occupancy tax, and it repeals grantor's tax. So we will make adjustments, and we have made adjustments regarding what we anticipate that we will have moving forward. Just the pie chart just shows the revenues that we anticipate that we will collect by the end of fiscal year 18. The pie chart on the left represents the total taxes and fees we've received from three funding sources. And I don't know if you can see it well on that screen, but the little green piece in the middle, and it looks so small, is the interest that we've earned. We've earned approximately $12.9 million in interest, so we do pretty well. We have a robust investment program, so we do well on interest. The pie chart on the right shows how much we've distributed to the localities for their 30%, and how much the authority has maintained and retained for the 70%. To date, in our three funding programs, we've adopted 79 projects totaling $990 million. And I want to note, the authority is multimodal in our funding. We do not fund solely highway projects. We do not fund solely transit. I know there's been a lot of discussion, oh, you're going to take the authority's highway monies. Our projects are multimodal in nature, because in this region, we realize that there is no one particular mode that really gets the job done regarding congestion relief and moving people and improving the quality of life. I did put an asterisk by the $990 million. That number includes the $300 million that was a part of the Transform 66 Outside the Beltway project. June of 2015, it seems like a lifetime ago, then Secretary Lane came to the authority requesting half at that time what was the public contribution for the I-66 Outside the Beltway project. And again, we don't issue checks, we fund projects. The authority had agreed to fund the I-66 at Route 28 interchange. But as you know, that money, that money was no longer needed because the project was being constructed without any public investment. So for our six-year program that we're currently out for public comment with, we have 60 candidate projects that we released for public comment. When we did the call for project last October, I think in response to that call, we received about 67 projects. Out of that number, 62 were deemed eligible, meeting the criteria of being in transaction and having undergone HB 599. And again, our projects have to be primarily in Northern Virginia, because it has to benefit the taxpayers who are paying our revenues. Of that amount, we had 62 projects. Two projects that were actually submitted by Metro were subsequently withdrawn when they saw the action that DC, Virginia, and Maryland took. They said that their projects could actually be unfolded in the estimated $500 million that they would receive per year. So our funding requests went from $2.6 billion to $2.5 billion. We don't have $2.5 billion, you know? And it's interesting, because people said, oh, you know, well, Metro is withdrawing its projects, and yes, but we still have $2.5 billion worth of requests. We actually have $1.2 billion in pay-go, what we think we'll have to populate the six-year program. And I won't go over each individual primary mode, but as you can see, we have bike pad projects, BRT, park and rides, interchanges, road whinings, the gamut, you name it, we received it. So there are three candidate projects that were submitted and received by the city of Falls Church. Those projects totaled $30.2 million. We have the West Falls Church and Joint Campus Revitalization Project. We have the North Washington Street Multimodal Project. And then this one, the last one, wasn't actually submitted by Falls Church. It was submitted by the Park Authority, but it's primarily in Falls Church, so I did include that project, the W O N D Trail. Project eligibility, again, you have to be in transaction. The project location primarily has to be in Northern Virginia. Congestion reduction relative to cost ratios, again, because the law requires us to give priority to congestion reduction relative to cost. When we released the project list, we did show, did so showing the congestion reduction relative to cost rank for every project. Then we had the transaction ratings. You know, they're performance measures for everything. Smart Scale has performance measures. The Transportation Planning Board has performance measures, and the authority has performance measures. We have 15 performance measures that we use in transaction, which is how the project scored in addition to the CRRC ratio. And then we look at qualitative considerations. Those are the things that we find out about projects that the quantitative, the numbers will not tell you. And that is very, very important, because we can have a project that really performs well regarding congestion reduction relative to cost, but the cost could be astronomical, or it can take 15 years to complete versus a project that scores lower on the CRRC that can be really completed within the life of our six-year program. These are the types of things we take into consideration, in addition to geographic balance and modal distribution. And public comment, we're actually out in our public comment period now. We had the public hearing last Thursday at the authority's offices. Our public comment period closes on midnight this coming Sunday, May 20. I do want to note long-term benefits. That's something HB 2313, the funding bill spells out, and it's very generic what it says. It says, "Over time," and I'm paraphrasing, "every locality, and for the purposes of the law," the localities are defined as the five cities and four counties in Northern Virginia, "every locality shall get their proportional share of the revenues that we collect from them." The authority, back in December 14, adopted principles, but again, we adopted principles on -- on purpose. It wasn't a policy, so we can get some flexibility in making adjustments to make sure that, over time, and I think the time has come, this life of this six-year program, to make sure that we're making sure that everyone is quote-unquote "whole." Public comment period, as I said, it closes midnight on May 20. That's the Sunday. We released the 60 projects without any funding recommendations. We did so for several reasons. Number one, we wanted to hear from the public. Number two, at that time, when we released the project list, we didn't know where we were with our revenue streams, you know? We didn't know how much money we would have based on the actions of the General Assembly. And as you see, we estimate that we will have $1.285 billion in pay-go monies. Back in January, I believe, the Authority had adopted its revenue estimates for the six-year program. Last Thursday, they adopted revised revenue estimates based on the General Assembly action. So we estimate that we'll have $1.2 billion in cash. A question that I get several times is, will the Authority issue debt? Now, I just make recommendations as the executive director, but it's going to be our recommendation that the Authority does not issue debt for this six-year program for several reasons. Number one, when issuing debt, you have, and this is the part that people seem to get, it's not free money. You know, Wyatt just talked about the city and congratulations on your AAA credit rating, but you have to pay the money back, you know? Every dollar you issue in debt is a dollar you do not have in pay-go. So for at least on this six-year program, it's going to be staff recommendation that you do not, that the Authority does not issue debt. And again, we're looking at an adoption date at the Authority's June meeting, which is June 14. So where we are, we've, the Authority released the public comment list. We're nearing the end of our public comment period, so I wanted to talk about the next steps. When the public comment period ends, we will go through our committees. The Authority has two statutory committees, the Planning Coordination Advisory Committee, which Mr. Duncan sits on. That committee is going to meet Wednesday, May 23. At that time, they will review the staff's recommended list regarding funding of the projects, and then they will make their own recommendation. Then our Technical Advisory Committee, this is a committee comprised of citizen experts, they will make their recommendation. And then on June 6, the Authority's Planning and Programming Committee, which is comprised of five authority members, they will make a recommendation to the Authority on the projects that should be funded in this six-year program. One thing that I do want to note is, we're going to do this all again next year. We're going to have another call for projects next year because what we want to do, and it's very important, is to synchronize with the Commonwealth Smart Scale process. So right now, this year, the Commonwealth is doing revenue sharing because now they're on the biannual calendar, but we want to synchronize with Smart Scale. It is very important to do that because our funding bill says, and I'm paraphrasing, just because Northern Virginia has these revenues, does not mean that the Commonwealth is absolved of this transportation funding responsibility for Northern Virginia. And I've committed and made no bones about it that we will always adopt our funding program after the Commonwealth adopts because we want to be in a position of making adjustments if they fund a project that the Authority is vetting and that they were, that was submitted to the Commonwealth as well. So I know that was a little fast, but that's where we are, June 14 is the anticipated adoption date. Thank you for your time, and like Wyatt said, we've worked closely with your staff, which is much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your good work. I know it's very complicated and a difficult process to go through, and I thank Mr. Snyder and Mr. Duncan for their work as well on behalf of council. I imagine there's some questions, maybe some comments. Does anyone have anything at the present? Mr. Snyder?
Sure. First of all, Ms. Bagman has done a great job as executive director. I said she can go right from NVTA to the United Nations. She's done a fantastic job, and so it's much appreciated. I think folks ought to really concentrate on slide number seven because those are the projects that we have in for consideration for the current six-year plan. Let me run through them very quickly, but before I do that, I want to recognize that council member Hardy testified at the hearing on Thursday. I think she was instrumental in having some of our citizens testify as well in support of that. The project was also supported by the Coalition for Smarter Growth and by the Sierra Club and other environmental groups, and by that I mean the West Falls Church and Joint Campus Revitalization Multimodal Transportation Project. That's to handle the transit, highway, bike pad, virtually every mode of transportation in and around the West Falls Church area, and also to support our economic development there. So that's a key project. It scored on the quantitative measures only so-so, which means the qualitative measures will be very, very important, and that's why testimony and the additional support that Cindy Mester led from the staff will be very important. The Washington Street Multimodal Transportation Project, I think we finally had to agree to make it a lesser priority than the West Falls Church project considering the unexpected shortness of funds due to the loss of some of the tax revenues to NVTA. And then finally, the enhanced regional bike routes, what's that to do is to create a parallel walking path next to the bike path. And we've had, not just near Mrs., but actually hits of pedestrians, bicyclists on the path. And so clearly, that's where that whole bike path is going to have to go in the future, the whole W N O D Trail, and it's going to start with us. So what we've done is to recommend to NVTA that the priority should be the West Falls Church project first, the regional bike routes, the W N O D, and the North Washington Street Multimodal Transportation Project. We still support it, but we have to recognize the realities. I would ask Cindy to make any comments that she would like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder and Monica, for joining us this evening. This is, as we've talked, a very important regional funding source and challenge with the latest General Assembly action, but there's still a good amount of money to address regional things. All of these projects really do look at regional congestion, but also multimodal. And the Nova Parks Trail does a nice job of connecting our west end to the Inside 66 commuter choice program with the Route 29 Overpass Bridge that we talked about. So this is a very key linkage if we're talking regional programs. And so I think it's very important that there's quantitative, but also equally as important as we talked about for flexibility, that the qualitative benefits to the key goals of this funding source are also highlighted. So I appreciate the collaboration we've had locally with our citizens, elected officials, and of course, our regional partners at NVTA.
Okay, are there other comments or questions? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Monica, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks to the fellow council members who have dedicated a lot of time working through this. Just a question on timing. If the West Falls Church project is approved as part of the six-year, how does it work in timing of actually getting the project complete?
So we actually, if we adopt in June, and I am pushing for that June date, that means your project will be fully funded at whatever amount. The next thing you have to do is get in your standard project agreement. That's when we can actually start releasing some of the funds per an invoice that we've received. So it's really June adoption, the next meeting is July, and that's get your standard project agreement in, and we can start moving.
Do you have an idea just how long a project like that would take to get from June to completion?
Well, and I think we rely heavily on the city's schedule because it's hard for, we're a nine-member staff, to determine, you know, how the projects are going to be executed. So we do rely on the applicant's scheduling.
Yeah, and this will take some design work and procurement work and then construction. So we're looking probably at a two-year period for all the undergrounding, the sidewalk, and the connection, but we've targeted this to time with the redevelopment up there so this can be part of the city's infrastructure support to the redevelopment project to maximize the benefit of that project as well.
I can tell you, that's pretty quick based on, you know, some past performance of our other projects.
We're getting to construction. Now, we do have, obviously, a partnership with Fairfax County. They've supported this project, but part of the undergrounding work will require coordination besides with the utility with Fairfax County.
All right. Did you have time, Mr. Duncan?
Just one second. Thanks for the staff on our side for, impressive to see how our small jurisdiction is identically our small. A project like the one that we're focused on now is a big deal. It's a big regional deal. It's obviously a very big deal for us. It's the closest thing to shovel-ready that probably, a project of this size. I do, it's not amplifying for some reason, but anyway, I just want to thank you all for all the work you do and you two.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Okay, thank you. I would also echo the thanks, but, and also, I know you've heard this already, but that campus revitalization transportation project really is important to us as a city, and I'm sure you're already aware of that, but I think it really presents some great multimodal benefits. You've got a metro station that's underutilized with the expansion of the Silver Line. You've got a school with lots of kids crossing every day. You've got a part of Fairfax County that's being redeveloped with townhouses and other things across a very busy street. So we think it's a really, a great project and very important certainly to our city, but I think also to Fairfax County. So I just want to reemphasize that to you, but, and again, thank you for the great work I've heard from other folks and for coming here tonight.
No, and I appreciate that, and what I would like to say, your qualitative information provided is probably one of the best to help us, you know, in making funding recommendations. Again, we make recommendations, the decisions lie with the Authority, but the information submitted by the city was very, very helpful because, again, the numbers tell one story, but it doesn't tell the complete picture of the projects. So thank you.
Thank you. And I tell you, before you leave, if your assistant would like a pen, we've got one and an M&amp;M's for the road.
It's her bedtime.
If you'd like one, we're happy to.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks much, and now finally on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
Certainly. We have TO 18-08, Ordinance to amend Ordinance 1980 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2018 for the general fund, School Community Services Fund, and the capital improvement program funds.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Botwold.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of the council. The item before you, requests to amend the current fiscal year 18 budget to reflect new grants and other revenues received from various sources, transfer and appropriations between departments, also CIP program appropriation, and use of committed capital reserves. It requests an overall appropriation of $518,839 is requested in general fund, supported by restricted grants, debt proceeds, sale of surplus equipment and fixtures, insurance claim, and committed capital reserves. This will bring the reserve balance to $9.8 million, and there are no changes to this item as after discussed since the last workshop, work session on Monday, May 7. So I'll open this for questions if you have any.
All right. Are there any questions or comments or public comment? Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, no questions, no comments? Okay, one comment.
One quick comment, and that is, I just want to, for the public who may not always pay attention to budget items, this, shockingly, I just want to emphasize that this is part of our, the annual cycle of how we do things. So we usually do a budget amendment in May every year to pin things out and put things where they belong, and this is just part of that. I just need to confirm that.
That's correct. The charter calls out that all departments stay within budget for year-end, so we do our best to project. And based on the performance so far, we make sure that each department has enough funding, and any transfers that are required to true-up, that's when we bring it. The final results, the after results will come to you as part of the CAFR that we bring annually in September.
All right. Is there any other comment or?
Just one request, if I could, to staff the $150,000 for pedestrian accessibility in Mount Daniel Elementary School, 89B. If we could just get the word out to the folks in that neighborhood, some of whom go back to the Safe Routes to Schools discussions seven, eight years ago, so hopefully their emails are still active, but just to make them aware that what we're doing here now relates to something that we've been talking about here almost a decade ago, and we are making some progress, and I presume that efforts will be made to get that done, you know, consistent with the school calendar. But anyway, just give folks an idea that it is being done and what the timetable is. I think that'd be helpful. Thanks.
All right. And thank you again for your work in getting our bond rating up. You did some great work, so we much appreciate it.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank the finance team and, of course, our city managers, leadership, and all the good policy work that you all are doing. So it takes a whole big load of people to get there.
Right. Do we have a motion?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I move to grant first reading for TO 18-08, scheduled second reading, public hearing for June 11, 2018, and advertise the same according to all.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
All right. Let's keep on trucking.
We have TR 18-17, Resolution to adopt the Falls Church 2018-2019 Council Work Plan.
All right. Mr. Shields?
And before we get to the work plan, if I could also note, the work of the Budget and Finance Committee really was really important in this ratings upgrade as well. The Budget and Finance Committee worked very hard on the financial policies update, the fiscal policies update, and brought those recommendations to the city council as well. And I think that was really important for the narrative as well when we went to New York.
Thank you all.
So in addition, the council work plan, the council last looked at this just over a month ago before budget, or maybe it was right in the middle of budget, actually, I think it was, and there were some, a couple of updates since then. Notably, we have worked with the Government Operations Committee to do one last scrub of this work plan, and some minor updates were to add a project which notes that on South Washington Street, we're working with, we want to really engage with Fairfax County to try to improve walkability and pedestrian crossings across South Washington Street. We had discussion with Government Ops about the work with the schools on seeking efficiencies and consolidations with schools, and that work really, I think, is now, it's on the council work plan. We've had one meeting with the superintendent, and we do plan to engage in a deeper level with our two, with the school administration and the general government administration on ways that we can work more effectively together and more cost-effectively together. I just wanted to highlight that in the work plan. Those are, I think, probably the two major updates. One more.
We also have the senior tax relief.
Tax relief, to note that we were going to work through the summer with more input, and I'll be putting a committee together to advise the council ultimately on some changes that we hope to bring to you in the August timeframe. And that working group should have people who are currently beneficiaries of the program. We'd like to have a council representative on that working group as well. If any of you all are interested, please let us know. So I will just end by noting that in the resolution, there are six kind of main areas of work that the council wanted to focus on. That came out of your retreat. And the first was increasing the vibrancy of our commercial districts, and so that's really the first part of the work plan, supporting economic development and growth in the city's commercial areas. That's the second piece. Making housing more affordable. There are several actions in there at the policy level to advance in that area. Four, to increase environmental sustainability and make the city more resilient against ongoing climate change. Five, continue to deliver core government services to support a healthy community. And six, implement a robust capital investments program that will serve current and future generations. Those were the sort of the six groupings that really came out of your work at your retreat, and then since then. then since then, uh, we've worked with staff to, to try to, um, uh, work through those ideas, uh, along with you. So, the council, um, so that's basically the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly, do you have anything to add?
Yeah. Thank you for pulling all this together. It's sometimes hard to have lots of ideas and put them all on a chart. Um, the one column that's blank is the lead board or commission on all of these?
Yeah.
Um, since we had all of our boards and commissions attend the retreat at the start of this, I think it's important that we're able to now send this back out to them and say, "Thanks for what you've done, and this is where we'd like you to focus your effort in the coming year as well, and work with us as partners." I don't...
So, um, we should have filled that out, and I regret that we didn't. I think we can do that administratively and then follow up with council, just make sure that we think we've got these in the right places, but I think it would be, if, if council's comfortable with this, here's one other idea, is that I think the intent is for, if the council adopts this, that we will come back on a regular basis, at least quarterly, at the same time we do our CIP update, and have a discussion about this and a check-in on our work plan, and so this is not the, by any means, uh, you know, the council's going to come back to this.
Another way to do it might be to send it out to the boards and commissions blank and say, "Which ones do you think fit with..."
You want to have a role in.
"Which ones do you want to have a role in?" Because there may be some that would like to be involved in the things that we haven't even thought. Let's leave it blank. Leave it up to the boards and commissions. Let's crowdsource that one. Um, and then, my other question is, there were some things that boards and commissions sent to us that were very important to the boards and commissions that aren't on our work plan, like the Arts and Humanities Council would like to designate the arts areas in the city, and I don't see that that is on the work plan, but that doesn't mean that can't be done, correct?
Absolutely.
Right. So, this is a flexible plan where things can come in that don't, aren't actually on the plan. Other things could be accomplished in the next two years.
That's right, and that's, hopefully that's cleared everybody in our communication with boards and commissions. This is not everything the city's doing. This is the council's work for this body to say, "Here's our, kind of our change agenda for the next two years."
Thanks.
May I ask a question about, uh, under vibrancy and placemaking? The downtown plaza, uh, which now says, "Complete construction of the public plaza in the 100 block of Broad Street by, uh, second quarter of 2020," no, second quarter of 2019, and the budget status is EDA funds approved. That, that is how I had assumed it to be, that this was a project to be funded by the EDA with their resources. I've since come to learn that we have to take some sort of budget action in order to move this thing forward. Is that true, or...
Potentially. So, we're working with the EDA on revised plans, um, and it is possible... Then the EDA's going to have a discussion about whether they will put more money towards this project, but the intent is, and always has been, that the EDA is funding this downtown plaza. So, that is the state of play. Uh, what, if there's a council action, it would be simply to appropriate the EDA's grant to this project. Uh, currently, $550,000 has been appropriated in EDA funds. If that number needs to grow, it would come from EDA funds.
Okay. I think that's been my understanding. Certainly, at least it's this member's view that that project needs to be financed, uh, with EDA money, uh, rather than with any supplemental resources, uh, that the council might be asked to provide, uh, first. And second, I think as a part of this process, it might be helpful for, uh, the city attorney to at least give me a better understanding, not tonight, but at some point, about whose money is this anyway? I mean, is it, if it's the EDA's money, um, then the council wouldn't, in my view, need to have its hands on it. If it's the city's money that is handled by the city for the EDA, that's another kind of thing. Uh, but, I don't know, at least it's, it's my view that this project needs to stand on its own if the EDA is enthusiastic about it, and, um, the, the question that others have posed about, you know, what might we do with the money that we're spending on the downtown plaza doesn't arise because it's not our money and our decision to make.
I can, um, work with the staff to get you some information on that. Some of the funds have already been essentially deposited with the city to be held for the project, so then the city will need to take action on them, but let, why don't I get some details so that you'll have accurate information?
Okay, right, yeah. To the degree that's, if it's just an administrative matter, you know, I'm not sure why we would need to vote to do that, but obviously, we, we would be voting on whatever you told us by law we had to vote on, but if it's just a transfer of funds, uh, you know, that you could handle internally, that would be not something that would rise to council needing to vote, in my view. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Hardy?
Um, as the EDA lays on, the update is that they don't plan on spending any more money than they planned. Um, as of the last discussion, they're trying to stay within the budget and trying to rebid the project. I think the only council action is actually to authorize a city manager in order to sign contracts. I think there's a threshold amount that's needed, um, to come before council anytime we go above that, saying that would be the only council action, is my understanding, but they are rebidding the project and trying to stay within the budget amount discussed earlier. I did have a couple other scope questions, if I may, on the work plan. Um, so within, I think these are things already called out within vibrancy and placemaking, but I want to make sure that the nuances are captured. Um, so for the first one, I think we've called out downtown parking, and I know that the, what's called out is expanding on-street parking and installing additional mid-block pedestrian, um, crossings. What we've also discussed, I think, is being able to refresh sheroes, crosswalks, and then painting kind of new parking spots. So, I want to make sure that would be in scope of downtown parking, as well as kind of using parking technology to kind of make parking more efficient downtown, not necessarily adding more spaces, but using technology to enable people to find spaces that are already there. Are those things within the scope of that item, downtown parking?
Well, the, the repainting of the sheroes and things like that, I think that's probably more of an operational issue. I don't, um, so the focus of that bullet really is about parking, and, um, so it is broadly phrased, and I think it encompasses all the strategies that you've described.
As long as we're all of the same understanding that it'll include those things. Um, second is around, uh, lights. So, I know that lights, downtown lights previously made it to kind of the, this bucket before. Um, I think my understanding was that we would continue to use our hotel tax, um, to fund the expansion of the downtown lights program. Is that something that we envision being part of the council work plan, or something that we can handle operationally?
I think the issue of whether we are expanding the lighting does, you know, ultimately, it needs to be another discussion, and I think what we really need to do is come back with a strategy for the use of the $90,000, and, you know, what are the, what's the biggest bang for the buck? And I think that's a touch, you know, I think the EDC has a role in that, the EDA has a role in that, but ultimately, the council's going to approve those expenditures.
Whatever we're doing on the lights, we figured out before...
For July.
Yeah. I mean, it's about the time. We need to start figuring it out, I think.
Yeah. That's why I bring it up now, because we're two months from when we think we need to order lights or expand lights, and we don't want to have the discussion in September. We want to do it now. So, we can certainly take it up in the next EDC discussion and make a recommendation to council. I'm looking at the EDC chair.
I'm, I'm all for that. Let's, we, let's get it done by the Fourth of July. Otherwise, you know, let's not do it. Having said that, I wouldn't be shocked if we're not talking about it on Veterans Day, but, you know, let's, let's do try to have a strategy.
Yeah, I mean, I think the probably, the, what staff's thought is, is that, um, you know, the, the, we want to make sure the lights that we have right now are, are working and functioning properly, um, but they're, but the funding for next year would not go towards expanding the lighting for additional blocks, so that we would instead be targeting other vibrancy improvements in the commercial district. So, if there's a disconnect on that, we need to get on top of that pretty quickly, and, um...
Are the lights intended to continually function after this one year?
Yeah. So, the idea, I mean, that, that cost, uh, that was almost all of the money that was used last year, and so the thought is, this year, year two, we'll be doing different things. Um, I think the planters and the lights is, is what the $60,000 went for in the current year.
So, we're going to have, the lights that are there will be fully functional by this holiday season?
Yeah. Well, they're, they're, you know, uh, all right, never mind.
I just want to make sure. I think it's, I think they're pretty nice, and I think we, as a city, can achieve that.
That is the intent, is that they, they, that those are working and doing exactly what they, we want them to do for, for where they are right now.
Are they going to be like red, white, and blue for, uh, Fourth of July? Anyone else is nodding?
Memorial Day, I believe, is also one of our targeted, uh, lighting times.
Anyone nodding in agreement with you?
Yes.
Who is?
I am.
Oh, you're nodding to your, okay. Look like you're looking at someone else waiting for a... All right, so we're going to have red, white, and blue lights on Memorial Day, or the week of Memorial Day, and the week of Fourth of July?
That's right.
Okay, good. All right, what else we have?
Um, I had a few more things.
All right.
Um, going back on scope, um, for affordable housing, I believe this is in scope of the rewrite of the affordable housing policy, but I wanted to confirm with the members up here, as well as you, Wyatt. Um, I know that they're looking at increasing the percentage of ADUs, or what might make sense. Are they also doing the analysis for cash in lieu of units as part of the rewrite of the housing policy?
Uh, yes.
And then my last things, which are not on here, but I remember they came up during the budget discussion, so I wanted to make sure they weren't lost. Um, we had citizens come petition us regarding, um, the condo trash fee policy, and I think at the time we had said, "We'll need to figure out whether this fits in the council work plan or not." What is staff's thoughts on that?
It is not in the council work plan. So, the communication is with those petitioners, but, um, it is, you know, that, that's a big, uh, complex issue, and it is not in the council work.
Not in the work plan. Have we gotten back to the folks in Park Towers?
Well, Ms. Hardy, the, this topic did come up at the last ESC meeting with, um, and Chris McGo is, uh, is, is right on top of it, as the city manager knows, and, uh, it is a complex issue, and he is looking at this and devoting staff resources to understanding of how big the problem is and who else is affected and what, um, what some of the remedies might be, so, uh, I, I don't think it's been lost.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just want to make sure it wasn't lost, that we've either responded to the residents who've come, or it's on the plane somewhere that we can resolve it. So, it sounds like someone's on it.
Yeah, and, um, McGo is tying this also to, um, the, the recompete for the, um, the five-year solid waste contract, so it's all part of that, because of, obviously, if they don't pay for it, then everyone else has to pick up that slack. So, it hasn't been lost.
All right, anything else? All right, does any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to public. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt TR 18-17.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, uh, just a quick question. Um, the issue of traffic calming, funding traffic calming and all of that, it's, I don't see it on here specifically, but that's an ongoing function of the city. Is that right, or is it on there? Uh, I just want to...
It, it, under core government services, it says, "Implement the neighbor, uh, neighborhood traffic calming programs, uh, projects." And what that stands, that's broadly phrased, but the idea there is, we know that this is a council priority. We do have funds now for it. That's been appropriated in FY19, and so with our quarterly updates, we'll be able to keep the council apprised as to how we're using those funds.
Thank you very much, and I would like to get going on the Innovation Task Force as well. Thanks a lot. Bye.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. Let's keep truckin'.
We have TR 18-23, Resolution to authorize the city manager to accept on behalf of council deeds conveying real estate to the city where such deeds involve monetary compensation out of previously appropriated grant funds.
Mr. Shields?
Uh, council, on this item, the current policy is that deeds that are given for free to the city, the city manager can accept without coming to council. Deeds are easements that require an outlay of funds come to the city council for approval. What this is requesting is that that approval to the city manager be expanded, uh, for, to allow the city manager to, uh, obtain easements for monetary compensation, and it's really specifically for federally-funded projects. And those federally-funded projects, there's a mandate that, uh, that there is a payment for these easements, and there's a process that's laid out in federal law as well, and so for the efficient administration of those projects, the request here is to allow the city manager to follow those federal guidelines and execute those easements without coming back to council, uh, because they're being used with, uh, federal funds for the purpose. The policy still would be, if we're using, uh, city funds or local funds for easements, we would come back to the city council.
All right. Um, any questions, comments? Any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to, to the public. Um, is there any additional or any discussion about this? Mr. Z?
No, I just have a, a quick one here. Um, I, I certainly think this is a reasonable request, and, uh, and funds, as you say, are, are available, that just to, uh, make the process more efficient. Is, are there any, um, upcoming projects or situations where this might be utilized in the future?
It has been, if, if you'll recall, the easements that were obtained for Roosevelt, and then the ones for South Washington, those are all federal funds used to acquire those easements. They came to council. Um, I'm thinking of ongoing projects right now. I, I don't have them right at the tip of my tongue, but I can tell you which ones, I could get back with the council in terms of what we anticipate will be coming forward in the future.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks.
All right, do we have a motion?
Can I ask a question first?
Sure, of course.
So, I guess, explain the process a little bit, but I'm, I'm familiar with the, the local appropriation for, uh, for easements from a federal perspective. I mean, the, the one thing that concerns me here is whenever I see line 17, seven, the purpose of this blank request, the blanket request always raises concerns for me. Can, can you describe, I guess, you mentioned Roosevelt, but are, are these decisions in the past more of kind of an administrative duty by city council where it just is, um, comes in front of council? It's, it's a vote to allow the, the deed to be taken by the city? I just don't want to end up in a situation where we have this blanket request, and there are things that would normally come in front of council that could potentially be controversial, where we've said, "We're just going to waive our right to have any say in this," and then that comes back to, to bite us later on.
Usually what happens in some of these projects, like there's one at, um, Great Falls in West, and we may have already approved the easements for that, but there may be one or two more coming through, and the budget for the project was already approved by council when there was a grant application approved, and then the money came in and it was appropriated, and it's being paid out of the funds that have already been allocated for that project. And, but staff still has to bring it before council before, once we've gotten a deed of easement and the, uh, property owners have executed it, and because it has money associated with it, they've had to come before council to get a blessing before, um, the manager can sign off as accepting it. So, it's been somewhat, um, it, it's really those cases where the money's already out there because it's part of the project budget that comes out of grant funds, and so it, it really has been coming to council for a fairly administrative approval, just because the project has already been in the works for a while.
Okay. Let me ask in a different way. Are we walking into a situation where we are removing our ability to have an open discussion about something involving an easement, even though there are federal dollars attached to it?
I guess effectively so. I'm, so, trying to think of the examples. Is there a concern that you can imagine where, where...
If, if a citizen has a problem with, with an easement, or, uh, a taking of any rights or property like that, whether it's federal or local, are we essentially removing ourselves from that discussion or reviewing anything that could potentially be an issue with the taxpayer? So, I understand where, you're, you're saying the local piece is carved out, okay? This is specifically for something that's being paid for with federal funds. Are we being removed from that discussion where if a citizen says, "I have a problem with what's being done," even though it's federal funds, they wouldn't have an outlet because it wouldn't be something that we discussed at council because we have passed this motion, and now it's just being handled basically outside of council chambers?
I guess, I think the city attorney might have some things to say. One thing I would just note is, this is not for condemnations.
These are voluntary transactions.
These are all voluntary transactions.
Someone agrees to say, "Will you take $10,000? We can put a sidewalk."
I understand.
So, generally...
No, but you can condemn an easement. So, these, these are voluntary transactions. Some, we say to... Some, we say to the homeowner, will you take $10,000 to allow us to put a sidewalk easement or sidewalk in front of your property? And they say yes. Then that's, that's what the authorization would be for.
So it's a contract between two willing parties, essentially, but it's initiated by the city to do a transportation improvement. I'll just say that the purpose for going to council is to serve as a check on the expenditure of public funds. It is, is generally not been because there's a controversy about the underlying issue.
Got it. Okay.
That's generally been what the councils, the reason we bring these to council.
I just want to make sure we're not removing the ability for people to come in front of council to talk about something they may have a problem with. And I get it that if there's already a transaction in place, but, or there's been an agreement in place, I just want to make sure that we're not making a decision that effectively prohibits us from being the ear of someone that may have an issue with any part of an easement, even though it's being covered by federal funds. Does that make sense?
I'm sure. I mean, I think the bottom line is, A, someone have a right to come here anyway. I mean, anyone can always come and speak and address us. Secondly, though, these funds would be expanded once there's an agreement had. So if someone doesn't want the sidewalk in front of their house, they'll say, I refuse to grant you the sidewalk easement, or how much money you're offering me, I refuse to do it, in which case we'd have to condemn it.
This is, this is purely at the end of the transaction, is what I'm asking.
Yes, we usually have a signed deed from the property owner before it comes to you to be accepted on behalf of the city.
Okay.
If I could note, these projects are in the adopted CIP, and so we will have had a conversation with council about the project, the scope, a lot of community engagement. So also, as well as the deed is sort of at the end of the process, we're not doing right away until the whole concept and scope of the funding and the community engagements happened. So hopefully, we will have had that discussion of any specific concerns on scope and design. And then, of course, final engineering may bring up an easement question that they may or may not...
Move to adopt TR-18-23.
We have a second? Second, second? Just do it anyway. Second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Abstain.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero with one abstention. Thank you.
All right, so we do not have a consent agenda today, is that right?
That's correct.
All right. Any business not on the agenda? Any standing regional committees, council liaison reports?
I have a question, thank you. So the EDC would normally meet Thursday week, but before that is our work session of Monday, May 21st. So I'm asking the manager if it's still anticipated that Founders Row and Park &amp; Lee will come to us on Monday next?
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll wait and decide what the EDC agenda might be until we see what comes out of that meeting. My other question about a committee of sorts is the VML Committee that works on economic development. I'd asked if I could be designated as the city's representative. That again, I was on there a couple of years ago and somehow fell off. And I have agreed to wash the mayor's car, so that he'll write a letter allowing me to do that.
Of course.
Okay.
Thank you for wanting to...
Some certification.
Yeah, we'll just get a signature. I think we can get it from city manager, now that you've said it was...
Okay. Well, since it rained...
They have a place for you.
Since it rained, maybe I don't have to wash the mayor's car. Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? Any other standing regional committees? Vice Mayor Conley, of course.
The Budget and Finance Committee meets Friday morning at 8:00 AM in the Dogwood Room.
Which one did you study?
Downstairs.
The downstairs room? First floor, oh, Laurel, okay. We'll meet in the Laurel Room at 8:00 AM. And we will talk about a number of things. One of them is revenue sharing agreements.
All right. Anything else to talk about? Any other council member comments? If not, Mr. Duncan?
Other council member comments? I just want to extend an invitation, everyone, to the CBC Annual Meeting and Cocktail Buffet this Sunday night at 5:30 at the Falls Church. Some of you have other commitments, but anyone is welcome to attend. Be an opportunity to spend a little more time with some of the youth representatives that you saw tonight and their parents, who are invited to come and mix and mingle. So please come to that. I just wanted to thank all those who were involved in organizing, Mr. Z, the visit Friday to National Harbor to see the autonomous transit vehicle, Ali, that the Local Motors is developing. Very interesting trip. And Tom Cash of the Environmental Sustainability Committee helped to put it together. But it was instructive, they're supposed to roll out a demo in July at National Harbor, so something that we might want to pay attention to and see how that works. Just one request. We've gotten a couple of letters from folks unhappy about trees being cut down. My understanding, these are trees on private property. If there's some sort of generic response that we provide to folks who think that somehow council has something to do with what people can do to trees on their private property, that would be useful to be able to send.
We did respond to the author of that letter, and she's in discussions with the city arborist. And, and I will share that correspondence with the city council, so you can have those points. But one part of the correspondence has been to invite the, the writer to participate in the city's update of our policies on, we're updating the natural resources chapter of the comprehensive plan, and so trees are a very important part of that. And that's the, sort of the policy foundation there.
Great, thank you. All right, unless there's nothing else regarding council member comments, why don't I move to approval of the minutes? Mr. Duncan? Any comments to the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, the minutes of the meeting of May 8th, 2017, on line, well, line 48. It's Peace Officers Memorial Day, I think. Line 135, it is, what is it? It is, oh, Walter, it's Walter's Impella on Lowndesbury Place, not Water. And with those corrections, I would move that the minutes of May 8th, 2017 be approved.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it? All right, let's move on. Eglid Duncan to February 27th.
Meeting minutes for February 26, 2018, on line 130, no, sorry, 185 through 188. I believe Mr. Shields said yes to both questions.